Thank you. Welcome, everybody. My name is Rob Shaw. I'm the Chair of the City of Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment. And welcome to the July 23rd, 2024 meeting of the zoning board of the City of Nashua. I will cover some introductory items regarding the board, its operation, how we'll conduct the meeting and the cases tonight, and try to get us underway pretty quickly. So just again, as part of some of that introduction, the zoning board is responsible for providing an opportunity for citizens to have cases heard where there needs to be or is desired for some relief from the land use code. Those are typically brought to us in the forms of special exceptions or variances. And I'll talk a little bit more about the details of those in a moment. We are, this board is comprised of five full-time members and up to five alternate members. Tonight, we do have the five full-time members of the board with us and one of our alternate members. And our alternate member is Mr. Paty. He'll participate in all the discussion and all of the cases as they're heard. He just won't be voting on the cases typically, although I do know we already have one of our full-time members planning to recuse from one of the cases. So he'll step in and act as the voting member of that case as well. The, the board, there are various things that we have to adhere to. The, we follow the city land use code documentation as well as the state RSAs. And then the board has its own bylaws of how we conduct our business. We are required to proceed when we have at least three voting members present for cases. That's not going to be an issue tonight, so I won't bother with any of the other details in that regard. We, when we hear the cases, we will ask that you, the applicant, come up and come up to the podium, present their, well, state your name and address. We'll ask out of anybody speaking tonight for the record. Present your case, and that'll be part of the public hearing. Then there'll be an opportunity if there are others that want to speak in favor. And then there's an opportunity for those that have questions, concerns, or opposition. We have time allocation set up for those with up to 15 minutes for the applicant and then five minutes for all the rest of those parties that are interested in testifying. I'm not sure, and it doesn't seem likely, that we will, based on just the attendance I see in the room at the moment, have opposition most likely for cases. If there is opposition, we do go through then an additional round of testimony where the applicant comes back for rebuttal. And then one of the parties that was, had the concerns expressed gets to do a final rebuttal. And we'll cover that in further detail if that occurs tonight. Again, I noted that we hear relief for two different kinds of cases primarily, variances and special exceptions. Both of those have five criteria that the board typically looks at. Anybody that's done the application already has seen that the applicants, the applications are built around those specific categories. And so the board is looking for that testimony and that information to see if the criteria are met. And there is, the variances are where something is directly not allowed by code, whereas the special exceptions are something that's allowed by code as long as certain criteria are met for that request. So again, like I said, there's, they each have five criteria, but they are, they are handled differently and have different criteria associated with them. So that's, that's part of what gets covered at the public hearing. We then close out any of that testimony, and then the board deliberates and comes to some sort of a decision. Usually that is an approval or denial. Sometimes we might table a case if we need to get additional information or there's some reason that ultimately it's determined that it might be in the applicant or everyone's best interest to provide additional time period for a case to be maybe gone back and some additional research done and that kind of thing. But again, we will come to some decision on a case. Like I said, it'll be, it's almost always just one of those three basic outcomes. I did note already, if you're providing testimony, and that goes for anybody, name and address for the record. All testimony will be taken from the podium through the microphone because the meetings are recorded in multiple manners. Primarily, there's audio and video recordings broadcast on the government access channel. As it turns out tonight, we're actually live because the Board of Alderman does not meet on the fourth Tuesdays of July and August. So we normally don't get televised live, but these, these do repeat and get replayed. The links for the, there's actually ultimately written minutes, which get approved by this board, those. And then the recordings are available through links on the City of Nashua website, NashuaNH.gov website. I will go ahead and take attendance. So go through, so Mr. Lionell?
Present.
Mr. Boucher?
Present.
Mr. McCarron?
Present.
Mr. Neely?
Present.
Mr. Paty?
Present.
And Mr. Shaw is present. That's the five full-time members and our one alternate member. We also have Mr. Carter Falk, Deputy Planning Manager with the city. So he helps advise us if we come to questions or concerns about trying to interpret code or sometimes he can just provide advice to us regarding how we're trying to understand some of the code and how it's structured. So let's see. Are there any basic kind of procedural questions from the audience members? Anything I've overlooked from the board perspective? Otherwise, I think we're ready to go. What we normally do is we basically kind of introduce the case, and then we'll ask for the applicant for each case to come up to the podium, and we'll proceed with testimony. Oh, that's right. Yes, thank you. Yeah, we're doing the first case, and Mr. Lionell is going to recuse himself from this case. So the five of us that are up here will vote on this case. So the owners are Kent D. and Susan G. Glossop at 23 Dickens Street, Sheet B, Lot 1178. The request is for the following: a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, item number three, to allow an accessory or in-law dwelling unit in the basement. And a second item, the variance from Land Use Code Section 190-32, Section B, subsection 1, to exceed maximum size of accessory dwelling unit, 750 square feet is permitted, 1,200 square feet is proposed. This is in the R18 zone, Ward 8. Welcome, and again, please state your name and address for the record.
Kent Glossop, 23 Dickens Street.
So yeah, please tell us, you know, kind of what's going on with your case while you're here, and let us know what you want to do.
Yep. So we had our basement finished. Both my son and I tend to work from home, and so we want to have space for offices and things like that in the process that we had it finished. And decided that it would make sense to have kitchenette down in the basement so my son can actually utilize that. We don't think it has any impact on anyone else. The number of people in the household is going to be the same. It meets the criteria for, for ADUs as far as we can tell. We decided not to try to put a partition in the middle of the basement. The basement is kind of just built out as an entity, so it's kind of one large space with one small additional room. And so we didn't see a reason to like put in a wall to try to make it smaller. So it's just kind of the natural way the space flows. Anything else that's?
Yeah, I'll just go ahead and ask because it seems like this is a case where there's not necessarily an intent to use that space as a separate living area for some family members or others, but it's really this addition of the second kitchen in the house that kicked off this definition that it now becomes an ADU. So at least looking at the floor plan, I don't see like what looks like any sort of a bedroom or anything. So it seems like it's more like by definition, the city's looking at it as an ADU, but you're not really looking at it to function like that. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair. It can be used in kind of the way that you would use an ADU. The small room that's in the basement could be used as a bedroom. So certainly if we turn around and sold it, somebody could say, yes, this is an ADU, and we want to do whatever you want to do with an ADU. But yeah, the intent right now is just the current family members are using it as additional space.
Okay. And I don't think I was actually paying attention, but there's, is there a bathroom down there or not?
Yeah, it's in the very corner.
Okay. Oh, here, yeah, yeah. I think it's kind of cut off from this.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Okay. All right. So and are you, are you already then familiar with these, these criteria?
Yeah, there's like parking, which is not an issue, and there's supposed to be a door. We actually experimented with not having the door on, but we can have the door on. That's not a big deal.
And the covenant, and the covenant?
Yeah, we can do that.
And no, no exterior door to the front of the house? So, okay. All right. Let's see if the rest of the board has any questions. Mr. McCarron?
So is the only way in and out of the basement through the house?
No, there's two exterior.
There is an exterior door.
Yeah, there's actually one on the very back side and one on the south side, the side next to the driveway.
Okay. And what is the use of what's shown as the workshop area and the storage area?
Yes, storage and a workbench.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I think we're set. Thank you. Is there anybody else present to speak in favor of the ADU request at 23 Dickens Street? Seeing none, is there any testimony, is there anybody wishing to provide testimony or has questions, concerns, or opposition regarding this application at 23 Dickens Street? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Anybody want to just jump in with any thoughts or comment? Mr. McCarron?
So there's nothing about the application that I find objectionable, but I guess where I'm looking for help from my colleagues is, is how is this different than a two-family? The house, according to the assessing records, has about 2,600 usable square feet. This is a 1,200 square foot ADU. It's about 60% larger than what we allow. While I get the intent, if the variance is granted and the special exception is granted, this is a unit regardless of intent, which is a unit going forward. So I guess that's what I'm just struggling with is why is this not just a two-family?
Yeah, that's an interesting point because I guess if you look at it as we make, if we were to approve, even though right now there's no intent, somebody could, could divide it up and put in two or three bedrooms. And like you said, it could function like a, you know, that's interesting. Okay. I hadn't gone, I hadn't thought about it that way, but.
It's not even could, it would because the variance runs with the land.
Right, exactly. So. Are we, I mean, I know other times we've talked about, can we do a stipulation that would, I guess, I don't know. I'm thinking about like, something about like that there can't be more than one bedroom or do we have, do we have that flexibility with this or not so much? Because I think with especially special exception, it's pretty much kind of is as.
It's really the, the use. We don't really regulate the number of bedrooms. In order to be regulate the number of bedrooms in this standard single-family house, or bathrooms, or living rooms, or dens, it's really just the kitchen. Whether they have one big bedroom or two small bedrooms, I mean, I think the board has seen other AD requests with two bedrooms. There have been some. Mostly they're one, but.
Yeah.
A two-family, that has to be taxed and assessed differently than a single-family within ADU. So it's a different tax structure and use structure. There's different building code requirements that I don't believe the owner is applying for either. They wouldn't have like separate gas and utilities and water, and so it's all the same single-family utilities.
So there, yeah, so that there would be another process if they actually wanted to formally have, use it a two-family.
That's correct.
Okay. So right now it really can only function as an ADU within those constraints?
As a single-family with an ADU.
Okay. I think that's, personally, I think that's enough to satisfy me, but I'm curious what, if anybody else has thoughts or concerns then about what Mr. McCarron brought up and that concept or where you were at in general on this. Mr. Neely?
Yeah, I mean, 1,200 square feet is on the very large side of what we've seen for requests for ADUs. It was a great question brought up by Mr. McCarron, but I think that discussion you guys just had in the corner there certainly moves me down the line to approving it. Yeah, under no circumstances do we want anything approaching a two-family in that, in that neighborhood. It's just not, it's not appropriate for that area. But I think right now I'm leaning towards a yes on this vote, but I'd like to hear what the rest of the board has to say.
Thoughts, Mr. Boucher?
Again, it's a, as Mr. McCarron says, it's a, it's a, it's a last ask for square footage. One of the things that in my mind was looking at was this is strictly in the basement. And again, if not knowing what the square footage is, you wouldn't notice it from the street. It's still 1,200 square feet. I think, again, the size of the house, as Mr. McCarron says, it's a very large house, and they're looking at just the basement. And it's not the complete basement, obviously, because there is already some rooms, some areas that have been cut up for the workshop and storage area and the furnace room, you know, not exactly, this furniture wasn't a calculation of stairs. But I don't know, again, if, if it would serve anybody to cut it down to 750 square feet, I don't know what, what, what the benefit would be to the rest of us, you know, the, the community, the neighborhood, knowing that by right with our approval, they can put an ADU in. So again, I think the scale of the house, the property, I'm leaning towards the approval if you can follow kind of my train of thought.
Mr. Crouching?
Yeah, I thought your reasoning was, was pretty persuasive, Mr. Shaw. I'm also going to vote to approve the request.
All right. Thank you. Somebody want to just offer a motion or is there any more discussion first? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Neely.
Do we want to run these as two separate votes?
Yes. And. Special exception first.
Yeah, okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for Kent D. and Susan G. Glossop owners, 23 Dickens Street, Sheet B, Lot 1178, requesting the following special exception from Land Use Code 190-15, Table 15-1, number three, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit in the basement. The board has had discussions and has found this is listed in the table of uses. This certainly will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. They're not adding any additional family members at this time. Definitely will not overload public water, drainage sewer, or other municipal systems. Special regulations are fulfilled. This will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of the residents. The board did discuss the size of the house, the way that this ADU would be located. You would never know that it is located in the house. There is a side entrance with enough parking for the residents that are going to be in the house there. And the applicant did say that he would abide by the nine tenants of the accessory dwelling unit checklist. So for those reasons, I recommend that we move forward with the special exception.
Second? Second by Mr. Boucher. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Opposed? And it passes four to one with Mr. McCarron in opposition. All right, so one thing I did, oh, gosh, yeah, thank you, thank you. Yes, we have the, the area variance to go through to. Ready to jump out of the case?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for Kent D. and Susan G. Glossop owners, 23 Dickens Street, Sheet B, Lot 1178, requesting the following variance from Land Use Code Section 190-32, subsection B, subsection 1, to exceed maximum size of accessory dwelling unit, 750 square feet permitted, 1,200 square foot proposed. This is in the R18 zone in Ward 8. A variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board did have discussion, the size of the house is relatively large on the upper levels, therefore the 1,200 feet in the basement is not out of character. We did have discussion about whether putting up a wall partially through would negatively or positively affect the applicant. We don't think there really would be any type of change to the building down there that would, that would suit the public. So we did agree on the 1,200 square feet. This is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. This will not adversely affect the property values and surrounding parcels. We have no testimony otherwise. This is not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served.
And then second again by Mr. Boucher. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor and opposed? And we see Mr. McCarron in opposition, passes four to one. Now I will note, so as, as you can see, the board has passed those requests, so you're welcome to proceed with your plans. And I didn't note this earlier, it's a general thing, we try to say it after most cases, but there is a 30-day window of appeal. If somebody came forward with, with a concern or opposition, they could file a rehearing request, and that could possibly stop your ability to proceed until that gets dealt with. But in the interim, you can go forward as planned. So good luck with your project. All right, that closes out case number one. We'll give Mr. Lionell a moment to get back up here, and we'll introduce case number two. Owner is Charles R. Donnelly at 19 Norwich Road, Sheet B, Lot 1284. The request is for variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16-3, to encroach eight feet into the 20-foot required front yard setback on Churchill Street to construct an attached 18-foot by 18-foot home addition. This is in the R9 zone, Ward 9. Welcome, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Charles R. Chuck Donnelly.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Good evening. My name is Chuck Donnelly. I live at 18 Norwich Road here in Nashua. I come to you, seek approval for a bedroom that I am hoping to attach to the side of my home as stated 18 by 18. And the reason needed for the variance is, as you can see, as I came up here, I walk with a prosthetic. And my house currently does not really provide the space for me to function properly at night. As you probably tell, like at night I want to take off my prosthetic like everybody else wants to take off their shoes or put some pajamas on or something comfortable like that. And moving around my home, specifically my bedroom, I'm stuck to walking device, crutches, walker, wheelchair, something along those means. My current bedroom is about 12 feet by 11 feet. And with a queen-size bed in there for my wife and myself and our two young children as they, you know, get lonely at night and come visit us, things tend to get tight. Expanding the room from eight, 12 by 11 to 18 by 18 would provide adequate space on both sides of the bed and in the front of it for me to be able to either crutch or use a walker or even a wheelchair if needed to appropriately move around my bedroom at night. And this includes activities like getting my clothes prepared, getting myself ready for the evening or the morning, or even just caring for my, my children. As I said, if they get lonely or scared, they come in the bedroom. The reason I need to expand that to the side of the house, which I am going to the variance for, is because the other side of the house is further away from all the amenities and things I need, such as a bathroom, my children's bedroom. So that side of the house does have space that would allow me to utilize this sized bedroom. It only adds the further inconvenience of having a prosthetic. Based on the design that I provided to you, I believe that the addition is fitting and matching to the house and the homes in the community. As I do live on a corner, it does not inhibit the view of pedestrians or traffic from entering or exiting the intersection. So I think that the, the public interest is still intact and it remains with the spirit of the ordinance. And I don't think it has any impact on city utilities or the neighborhood home values. If anything, probably to increase the values as, you know, my property value goes up, other people's property value is likely to go up as well. And that's kind of where I stand with my proposal.
All right. Thank you. Let's see if the board has any questions for you. Mr. Lionell?
Yeah, when I drove by there, it looked like that you had already made a pretty good start on the construction of that.
So, so it started out with I took down a couple of trees a couple of years ago when I moved into the home. And I went to go get the stumps out and some rocks out so that, you know, in preparation for this project, because I didn't realize that I'd been encroaching into the easement area. And so I got a big stump out, which took me about a six-foot hole to get that stump out, and then a rock out, and then this out, and that's how I ended up with a hole in my yard.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right, I think we're all set. You can have a seat.
All right, thank you.
Is there anybody else with, that would like to speak in favor of the application at 10 Norwich Road? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to 10 Norwich Road? Oh, 19, thank you. You have one. Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you. We did have one letter of support. I would like to write to support the approval of the proposed variance for Charles R. Donnelly, owner 19 Norwich Road, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section. As neighbors directly across the street from this property, we have no concerns or issue at all regarding the impact of this proposed work resulting in the approval of this variance. If there are any, any questions regarding our letter of support for approval, please do not hesitate to ask. Thank you, Adam and Sarah Wolf at 22 Norwich Road. So again, that's, that's a testimony in favor. All right, with that, I will close the public meeting.
Did you ask for opposition?
Yeah, I had already gone through, and actually, I think I technically closed the public hearing. So, but thank you for. So any thoughts, first thoughts from the board? Mr. McCarron?
I, I support the application. I think that the request for the master bedroom is reasonable. It's not overly large, and clearly it's a fairly small house with small bedrooms, as was noted. Given that it's a corner lot and a relatively small lot, there really realistically is no other place on the lot to put it. It, you know, likely would enhance the value of the surrounding properties with the investment that's made, and there doesn't appear to be a negative impact to the public or any of the neighbors.
Any other thoughts? Mr. Lionell?
Yeah, I'm also, excuse me, also inclined to support it. The, when I went to look at the property, I wondered why the, it looked like a sort of a sunroom or whatever between the house and the garage couldn't be used to enlarge it. But the applicant has explained that all of the amenities and the children's bedroom are on the other side, and, you know, it makes sense. And because it's a corner lot, then you have to deal with two front yard setbacks. So that, those are always problematic. So I do support the application.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm in support also, and I think oftentimes these cases, it seems like they do come down to this front yard, double front yard issue, and no, no other good place to go. The house is already situated in a way that, you know, by as many functions that looks like the side yard, but it, we, the city still. like the side yard, but it, we, the city still has to treat it like a front yard, so we kind of get into this bit of a conundrum almost. But, yeah, I'm definitely in support of it also. Would somebody like to make a motion for this case? Mr. McCarran, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the application of Charles Donnelly, owner, 19 Norwich Road, requesting a variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-16-3, to encroach eight feet into 20-foot required front yard setback, that's on the Churchill Street side, to construct an attached 18 by 18 home addition, be approved. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and that benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the variance. We find that, given the relatively small size of the lot, the positioning of the house on the lot, and the fact that it's a corner lot, and also, given the layout of the house, there's realistically no other area where you could add on to the house, where you could add a bedroom on to the house, and that, you know, the use of the bedroom itself is reasonable use. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, and would allow reasonable use of the property. It will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels, and we heard no testimony to that effect. In fact, we did have a letter of support from one of the neighbors, that it's not contrary to the public interest, that there'd be no negative impact to the roads, to the right-of-way, to any utilities, and that substantial justice would be done.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? And that passes unanimously, five zero. As noted before, there's the 30-day window of appeal, but you can definitely proceed. If you have any questions, contact Mr. Paul. All right, good luck. All right, we'll move on to case number three. Michael T. and Pamela J. Rathke, owners, 25 Atherton Avenue, Sheet 47, Lot 320, requesting a variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-44, to exceed maximum fence height. Six feet is permitted, requesting to install a six-foot, isn't that six? Six-foot tall extension on a portion of existing, isn't it supposed to be eight-foot?
No, that, no, they want to add six feet.
They want to add, okay, then I was misunderstanding the request. Thank you. To install a six-foot tall extension on a portion of the existing six-foot tall fence on the eastern property line, the RA zone, Ward 3. Welcome, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Michael Rathke, 25 Atherton Ave. My wife Pam and I have lived 25 Atherton for over, almost 25 years, and the reason for this variance tonight is to ask for the extension of the fence, of the existing six-foot stockade fence, to add an additional barrier above the fence, which adequately blocked the view of the windows and of the neighboring house in 2 David Drive, with the intentions of planting arborvitae's along the fence line to eventually grow to that height, which in time will remove the fencing. We have, over the years, been verbally harassed since 2001, and every year to current, by our neighbors, Kath, mostly Kathy and Dave, over the occasional barking of our dog in the early morning hours, due to animals climbing from their yard over our, over the fence into ours, or animals in their backyard along the fence line. These harassments have included wishing death on my entire family members, vile and disgusting language, and the application of a Nest camera pointing into our backyard, only in our backyard, suggesting that, and the suggesting of us to get a shock collar, turn it up to its highest setting, shock the crap out of our dog, as well as removing its vocal cords. Note, there is many, as, over 30 dogs in our neighborhood, which can be heard barking at any given time of the day, day or night, especially when the delivery trucks are around, and especially when the mailman's around. Our neighbor Kathy and Dave, mainly Kathy, in the last six weeks, which is currently the last time we called the police for the last episode, placed signs in the windows facing our backyard, one reading, "White trash," the other reading, "I was living in your parents' basement, losers," and the other reading, "Even your own mother won't live near you." Please note that my 80-year-old mother has lived with us since last August, after my father passed away last March, as well as my daughter and her boyfriend, due to the fact that the multifamily apartment building that they were renting in Manchester was sold, and they were told they had to be out by May 1st, given only two and a half weeks to find a new apartment. Please also note, we have neighbors that have three children under 10, that visit quite often, play in the backyard, and they have, we have to explain to them what the signs mean, since they all can read, this is very hard and embarrassing for us. We have tried to civil, to have a civil conversation, to have a calm conversation, but have had to call the police every year since 2021. We have modified our deck on our house with a gate, so that when Kathy and Dave are outside in their yard, we can keep the dogs on the deck. We cannot control a dog from barking, especially if there's an animal that climbs over our fence into our backyard, or other dogs, or other animals on the other side of the fence, or people walking their dogs down David Drive to go to the power lines and train tracks. We just want to be able to enjoy our backyard with the family and friends, without the view of the nasty signs, or our neighbors screaming out the window, vile and berating things for us. Thank you for your time.
Hang on, I want to see if the board has questions. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Well, I suppose I do. So you say that you've called the police, I, this is, obviously, that would be one of the first things to try for, you know, many times, okay.
I, yes.
What have they told you? What have they told you?
The first two times, they came to us first, got our side, then they dealt with Kathy. Dave was at work, because he works nights, at, in Hudson. They experienced what we experienced, and they were concerned that she's had some issues, that it was just a dog that was barking, because there was a 45-pound raccoon that keeps frequenting our backyard, along with possums and every other animal. Once the Nest camera came up, they called, I took pictures, went to the police department, they followed me back to the house, it was pointing, her window is six feet above our fence. It was only covering our backyard. So they had them remove it for invasion of privacy, because it did not cover their yard. Had it been pointing down, it would have caught what was, the dog was barking at, but it was pointed straight at our house. So they removed it. Last year, the police came out, well, this time, the police came out and said, "What you need to do is get a Nest camera from my yard, showing my backyard, and her house sits above my fence, so it would be in the background." We installed a Nest camera, front yard, or front yard and driveway, backyard to cover, so if she dives out the window and has one of her little episodes, it would be caught on camera and recorded. They suggested I come down and get a variance to do the fence extension, and if that didn't solve the problem, then I have to fill out paperwork for restraining order. Because they have gotten more vile and vile every single time it happens, and it's only once a year, it seems, every June. I have no idea, we caught it on the paperwork from the police reports. My wife caught it, I didn't catch it, my wife caught it. I don't know if June is a certain time of the year, I know my son was in the Marine Corps, and his birthday used to be fun, but on both deployments, he lost more people on his birthday, and it darkened his birthday. So I don't know if something is there. We've tried over and over again to try to calmly talk to her, she won't talk to us on any given time. I can be out in the yard all day long, she doesn't say anything to me, but as soon as my wife walks outside, dining window comes up, she dives out, and lets loose. And the things that she says, I cannot repeat here, because it's being broadcast. And for my son to be, wished that he was killed in Iraq, my daughter was dead, my wife died on multiple occasions, as well as me. Even on the day of the last incident, I was on dispatch, because they put these signs up, while the police were at the front door, she was standing in her dining room window, with the curtain open, my daughter's boyfriend was on the deck to make sure the dog stayed inside, she was flipping him the bird the entire time the police were at the front door. While I was on dispatch, in my driveway, in the front of the house, about the signs and about her flipping off the whole time, because Dave said she was asleep, she drove by, stopped in front of the driveway, dispatch heard it, when she said, "I hope you haven't die soon, the sooner the better, I hope you haven't die soon." And dispatch heard it, and then she connected me to one of the responding officers, and I told him about the situation. We've been here for 25 years, we've had multiple dogs over the years, all the other neighbors that lived at that, that's probably the fifth person or family that's lived in that particular house. All the other families, if they don't hear the dogs barking, they're looking out the window, because every time they bark, it's kids going down the trail, a coyote will come down the trail, a deer will come around their house, it's always something. They just bark a couple of times, and then they just run the fence line, that's it. They don't non-stop bark, they don't go on for hours. They just bark to alert, they might bark a little bit more when the critters are in our yard, but I just feel that we are so uncomfortable being in our backyard right now, because we're afraid that at any given moment, she's going to dive out and have one of these episodes.
Yeah, I, I'm very sympathetic, but I'm, I'm trying to figure out how this, this fence is going to really solve your problem. I mean, yes, it may block the signs, but it may not prevent the other, some of the other things.
It may not prevent her from having these screaming episodes.
It's not going to help with the dog barking, is it?
I know, that's, I mean, the dog's going to bark, because there's an animal there. I mean, I can hear it at any given time of day or night, even when I take him out for his nighttime feed, I can hear all the other dogs in the neighborhood barking. He doesn't bark at night unless there's a raccoon that keeps coming over the fence into our yard, or the possum, or the skunks. She has no fenced-in backyard, her house is 2 David Drive, 4 David Drive does not have a fence, and they back up to the power lines and the train tracks, and that's a highway for the animals. And we've seen everything all the way up to Moose, come through the backyards and come through the street. So, had she put the camera in her backyard, it would have caught what the dog is reacting to. But for her to put it in our yard was concerning.
Yeah, and that got taken care of?
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you, that's all I wanted to ask. Mr. Neil.
Can we?
Oh, wait, hang on, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Sorry about that.
I didn't catch you over there.
No, that's okay. So the actual fence itself, so I see documentation about a fence extension, proposed fence, what is this made out of? I was almost thinking of some type of, like a soft material, what is it?
Well, what it is, is a privacy mesh fence, that you typically attach to chain-link fence. And what we have is, we'd planned on putting fence poles in the ground, we'd grab the netting poles from the neighbor's trampoline when they were tearing it down, so they come up a foot and a half, bend in eight inches, and then they go straight up. So it wouldn't be a straight-up fence, it would go up, come in, we'd run cable along and go through the grommets to each end, to attach it, that way, it's anchored to the ground, it's anchored to the poles, and the wind can't do any damage. It's just, it's a breathable barrier.
It's not the whole fence, though, right? You're just doing a portion?
No, 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 it's just four panels of fencing, that will cover the windows that she dives out.
All right, thank you.
I think we're all set with the board's questions. Is there anybody else, anybody present who would like to speak in favor of the application at 25 Atherton Avenue? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application at 25 Atherton Avenue? Any seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts? Mr. Neil.
So, so I think this is everybody's nightmare, to deal with this type of situation, and so my heart certainly goes out to you. My initial thought process, when I read the application, and having listened to the testimony, is I'm not sure that this is the way to go, I was thinking more trees, arborvitae's, I know it takes a little bit of time to get there. Having driven down that road down Atherton, everybody can see that fence line driving down Atherton as you go by David, to have, only have a portion of it with the privacy, I don't know if I'd love that, if I was a neighbor, I get it, if it was, if I was one of the other neighbors, I get it, there's an issue with 2 David. I'm going to be interested here what the rest of the board has to say, I, I almost think this is not so much a zoning issue, with the issue going on with the neighbor, as I think Mr. Lionel was alluding to, but I'd like to hear the testimony, or the discussion from everyone else, because I'm honestly undecided at this moment, on which way to go with this.
Mr. McCarran.
Well, picking up on Mr. Neely's train of thought, I have a lot of sympathy, you know, for the people involved in this, for the applicants, this is, neighbor situations like this are really, really awful, and they, you know, the emotions that are associated with it are strong, this is your home. But for me, the challenge is, is that what we're looking for are the conditions in the land and the property. How is this property different from others? You know, what are the special conditions? And I guess that's what I come down to, is that I have a hard time seeing, awful as it is, the dispute between two neighbors, you know, is really, I think, as you put it, is this really a zoning issue? And so that's where I struggle, and I also do wonder whether it will solve the problem. It may aggravate it.
Mr. Lionel.
Yeah, I sort of echo Mr. McCarran and Mr. Neely's thoughts. You know, it's, it's an awful situation, I hope I never encounter something myself, and I have great sympathy for the applicant, but I am deeply skeptical that even if we were to grant this variance, that it would result in any reasonable relief that the applicant would like to see, and may actually, as Mr. McCarron suggests, escalate the situation. The neighbor might find other ways to aggravate it. Also, as Mr. McCarron says, this is not a zoning issue, this is something that needs to be resolved. You know, if we deny the variance for this fence, you know, there's this term called spite fence, which is sort of an anti-spite fence, I suppose, then the police have suggested a restraining order, and that, to me, is where I would have gone first, so I'm a little bit puzzled that the police are even suggesting this, but I, I can't approve, I'm not in favor of this variance application, because it just does not meet the criteria for a variance.
Mr. Boucher.
I had the same thoughts, on the same lines everybody else had. I will throw out that, you know, a couple of things. I will throw out that, you know, a couple of things that I could look at or I did look at was there is a difference in topography from the side of the house a little bit to that neighbor there. I think that, again, thinking back in general, if I was looking at this as just strictly more of a privacy issue, let's say there's no issues going on, then it is a privacy issue. We like a little bit more privacy. I think we've seen this recently in some of the cases that we've done. Again, you know, they stowed on their own merits. So again, I can look at that as part of why maybe I would, I would consider this as far the issue. Again, I think strictly speaking, again, I, again, am feeling for the applicant. But, you know, the other thing is trying to solve obviously is the visually offensive nature of what's going on. But again, I can look at topography issue and say, okay. And the main reason for that and to add privacy would be on those four sections of fence for some privacy. I don't believe, let's just say that this six-foot extension exists. Again, if the property was all even, I don't think that would really be more than what a six-foot fence would be, too much more than what a six-foot fence would be existing if the property was all even. And its issue maybe not exist as much because the height difference wouldn't be there. And I don't believe that there is any detriment to the, to the other property as far as their enjoyment of the property, you know, sunlight and all that stuff. So I'm kind of, not on the fence, but I'm just saying that I can see a case, I could make a case for this, even though it is, I can understand where it's kind of a stretch. But I also can, like I said, I'm looking at the topography and what's being requested. And that's all I have for now.
Any comments, Mr. Patrick?
I mean, it does seem to me that this might not be a zoning issue. I do tend to agree that this might not solve the issue. I would tend to, I think I would lean towards approving it because it's, you know, this obviously is a problem that you folks are having. This is a potential solution. You know, it's something that you, that may work. But obviously, I'm the opener on this one, so I don't get to vote.
Yeah, I'm, this is, this is like a really hard case because I think, you know, the emotions and just dealing with this kind of a neighborly situation is, as I think already kind of noted, like, you know, kind of like a worst person's nightmare type of thing. And the only thing that I feel like I can kind of come to a little bit in terms of trying to look at it from a land perspective is the neighbor's house is very close to the applicant's property line and where the fence is. I mean, it looks like it's like eight feet or so off. It's not, it's not a lot, eight or 10 feet. And so there is, but, you know, you can kind of, especially you have the one picture, you can kind of see, you know, you have the same kind of thing going on in the other, to the other neighbor, the other way, where there's a second story and you can see a good part of the first and second story. So, I mean, these are smaller homes, smaller yards, you know, and this, you know, fences only can do so much for privacy in those regards. I hadn't, so, so as far as I, I do feel like there could be some argument possibly made for the kind of providing some privacy because of how close the neighbor's house is. But I also can see that, you know, putting up, allowing somebody to put up an additional six feet of fencing material, in this case, will, will actually significantly block the view of the neighbor's house from, for the neighbor as far as looking out. So I think that they, they could have, you know, real objection to that, even though we don't have any testimony obviously about that. But I feel like, you know, that it's not, it doesn't seem like things rise to the level where there's an issue with the land that I can see essentially allows for, you know, whatever this ends up being, a twenty-some foot, 25 feet run of 12-foot fence, basically. That's, that's pretty significant. So I think, you know, you talked about doing like arborvitae plantings and all, and, you know, I think another thing, you know, I realize that none of these, you know, things that to have any relief, it's, you know, you either have to buy very expensive ones or plant, bring in a lot of soil and build it up, or, you know, you could do, you could do a shed possibly and, you know, get a visual, you know, block that way. But I just think the problem the board has is, I think, I think we see it as it's a very awful situation, but I don't think we see justification for variance to provide you this relief because it's, we're supposed to judge things based on the land and really independent of who is living in your property or any of the neighboring properties. So I feel like that's what ties our hands the most. So I think it's clear the board is sympathetic to your situation, but I think we, we get, we sometimes are, I think, can be frustrated in a way by these situations, also because I think we'd like to see you have some relief, certainly. But I don't think we have a way through our role as a quasi-judicial body to, to see something that allows us to say, yeah, this is, this is what makes the land unique or the situation unique about the property. So I think, I think that's the struggle that I think, at least I know, I think we all seem like we're feeling. But if there's further thoughts, you know-
A question from Mr. Falk.
Yeah.
Mr. Falk, I just had a question. Just because I have friends in another community that bought a piece of property, last piece of property was a junkyard, way behind there, and they had picked some trees down and then they didn't like the view. They were able to, in that particular community, put up a screen within, not in the setback, in the rear setback, but outside the rear setback, they were allowed to put a screen. They were allowed to go 20 feet, whatever. I'm just asking, in the city of Nashua, is there any ability or if there was a screening put up, could you put us, like a screen, a line of screening within a side setback or the rear setback? Is that, is there anything allowed or, or, you know, so if somebody discussed, is this individual within the setback wanted to put up like a 12-foot tall screening for 30 feet, like, just like a mesh screening or something, could that be done?
Well, we'd have to classify it as something.
Yeah.
We'd have to call it either-
It's sort of like a, like a very thin shed. And there are rules about, about the height of the roof within an X distance of the, of the property line.
There is a, accessory structures can't exceed, it's 12 feet high within 10 feet of a property line.
Right.
And they can't exceed 20 feet in height overall. We'd have to call it something. Someone puts up like a screen like in the back of you there that's 25 feet long and it's 10, 12 feet high, we'd have to call it something. And they're going to have to get a building permit for it because there's going to be a footer that's required from the building department. So we would probably have to be, we'd have to call it a fence. And fences aren't supposed to be more than six feet high. Otherwise, you know, to play devil's advocate, if everybody had these 12-foot-high structures all around, the wind and the view from neighbors is going to be impacted.
Right.
It's also a safety issue with that high. The wind load on something that high is way, you know, it's a lot higher than something that's six feet high. So I have to say something like that, probably not.
Just a question. All right, thank you. I'm all set.
Okay. And Mr. Neely?
I think I would have been a lot more comfortable with an eight-foot fence. I would vote for that in a heartbeat. I mean, we've done that many, many times. It's, it's the 12 that's the killer here. So if the request changed to eight feet of actual fencing material, I would vote for that. But with, at the 12, with the material that they're trying to use right now, I'm not going to be in favor of this.
And it seems like in this case, the eight might barely provide the barrier that they're looking for. But, you know, I, and I actually, I misunderstood when I was looking at it. I was somehow thinking they were only asking for eight feet total, and I didn't realize it was an additional six foot. So, so, yeah. I was feeling, you know, closer to maybe being able to support it in that regard, but yeah. Any other discussion or does anybody want to make a motion? I feel like there's seeming consensus and difficulty in supporting this, but-
I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion behalf of owners Michael and Pamela Rathke, address 25 Atherton Avenue, Sheet 47, Lot 320, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-44 to exceed maximum fence height, six feet permitted, requesting to install six-foot-tall extension on a portion of the existing six-foot-tall fence, making it 12 feet total on the eastern property lines. This is in the area zone, Ward 3. The board finds that this does not qualify for the land causing the need for the variance. The board, you know, is sympathetic to the applicant but believes that there is another, there are other options the applicant can pursue other than the variance. And in fact, the applicant admits that such avenues have been suggested to him. The board does not find that this 12-foot fence would be within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We believe that it will adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We think that it may well be contrary to public interest, and we're doubtful that substantial justice would be served in terms of, we don't think this will be effective in accomplishing the applicant's goal. So make a motion to deny the area variance.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Mincara. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the denial of this application? That is unanimous, 5-0. Sorry again, I think the board is sympathetic to your plight. There is a 30-day window of appeal. You can appeal this decision if you feel that we did something in error. If you have follow-up questions, please contact Mr. Falk.
Can you please put it in the record that the judge put the restraining order-
That will be part, that is part of the record.
Yeah, it was, it's already part of the record from, from the-
The record was already filled out. That's the point. That's the truth.
I'm sorry. Good luck.
Good luck. Really, we wish you luck.
All right, yeah, those are, it's not an easy case.
Nope.
All right. Case number four. Nashua 272 Realty Ventures LLC is the owner. Maura Sullivan, NH Signs, on behalf of Whole Foods Market is the applicant. At 272 Daniel Webster Highway, Sheet A, Lot 127, the request is for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-108, Section C, Subsection 2, to exceed maximum allowed wall sign area. 150 square feet is permitted, 303 square feet is proposed. This is in the HB/GI/TOD zones, Ward 7. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Peter March, New Hampshire Signs, 66 Gold Ledger Avenue, Auburn, New Hampshire. So I'm representing Whole Foods for the site at 272 DW Highway. We're allowed 150 square foot sign. We're requesting 303 square feet sign. And as you stated, the site is Zone HB. So the new Whole Foods building occupies the area once occupied by Toys R Us. I think it's been vacant for some time. And as you, if you pass by, you can see it's being built out substantially right now. It's a 202-foot-long building, about 35-foot-high at the main entrance. So Whole Foods has seen a fairly dramatic increase in, in stores in this particular area. The North Nashua store will remain open. That's 32,000 square feet, and this will be a 43,000-square-foot store. In addition, they've got about 500 stores nationwide. They're opening, I mean, three in New Hampshire, 32 in Massachusetts. This will be number four. But they see it as a key growth area, and they allegedly are looking at Steeplegate Mall in Concord. And Tuscan Village, I believe, is fairly nearly set as another location. So they're expanding rapidly into New Hampshire. So Webster Square, as you know, is a fairly complicated traffic pattern. And it's particularly complicated for traffic heading south on DW Highway, wanting to get into this location. If you're a person heading south and you want to get into Whole Foods, you have to basically turn at the intersection of Silver Drive, which is at the, essentially the back of the Five Guys building. So if you're a southbound, you turn essentially, I believe it's the Pizza Co. entrance somewhere in that, in that vicinity. That's the only reasonable place to turn. Otherwise, you would be going to the rear of the building, somewhere down by Barmackin. It's not as significant for northbound traffic. There is an entrance close to the, close to where the site is. But the key part, the key element and the reason we're asking for a larger sign than is normally allowed is because southbound traffic will essentially be looking for the store, and with a smaller sign, it's going to be difficult to see. Very clumsy, yeah, sorry. So essentially, this is, this is the area that the traffic would come down. This is the building here. And to get to the Whole Foods, one goes into the entrance and then goes down the parking lot to get to the Whole Foods building. So essentially, the closest that people would see, the southbound drivers would see the building, would be 585 feet away. They're more likely to be looking for, for somewhere like 950 feet away, which is a substantial difference. And really, it's for those people that were looking for this larger sign. The other factor that you've got to bear in mind is a lot of people that are looking for the store are going to be hopefully coming from Northern New Hampshire, Northern Massachusetts and Southern New Hampshire, and they're not going to be necessarily familiar with the Whole Foods and that location for a while anyway. So to the five points of the variance, granting the request variance will not be contrary to the public interest. So the public interest is served by allowing the traveling public to safely identify the location of the business. Whole Foods is a destination store for many, especially, as I said, visitors from Northern Massachusetts, Southern New Hampshire. It's a busy and somewhat confusing entry, and though it serves this business, it's not entirely clear. The sign as requested, and you have this in your package, fits well with the building. It doesn't threaten public health or safety. The character of the neighborhood is such that there are many other large signs in the area. And as I said, clear signage is essential for traffic safety and direction. To the second point, the proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance. Sign code, including this code, aims to regulate signs and associate a clutter and protect the character of the neighborhood in which they're located. Among others, the goals are to prevent the, to promote the safety of the traveling public, to promote business in a responsible manner, and to protect existing property values in both residential and non-residential areas. It's quite difficult for a sign company to drive up to another company's sign, say for example, Market Basket, and actually measure it. So typically, we do the best we can to measure it from a distance. So if I looked at some of the, some of the signs close to this property and tried to give you what I consider to be a reasonable scale, Market Basket is 283, the building is 283 feet long. The sign area, I believe, to be about 480 square feet. And the entrance, from the, this, the entrance is about 448. Same sense, the Home Depot sign, which is not really associated with an entrance per se, is 300 square feet. And I believe that Bob's Discount Furniture is somewhere in the 300-foot mark as well. So this sign is not really out of scale with other signs in the area, and I just took a small sampling. To the third point, substantial justice would done to the property owner by granting this variance. Effective signage directs people to the store. Investment made- Investment made in the store is substantial, and to fully capitalize on it, the owner needs to be able to effectively direct people to it. The code calls the signage that is half the size requested. So, in other words, we would be limited to 150 square feet, where we're asking for double that. That would not be effective or readable for that 950 square, 950 feet that we believe people would be looking for the store from. To the fourth point, the proposed use will not diminish the value of surrounding properties. There are many other signs of equivalent size. The building is attractive. It's a new development. The sign is relatively plain. It doesn't have any flashing motion or anything flashy about it. It's just a plain green sign on a, on a, on a tan background, essentially. As I said, the property was vacant for a long time, and this, I think, is an attractive development, and it'll add substantially to the value of the area. Special conditions exist that literal enforcement results in unnecessary hardship. They really relate to the fact that Webster Square is a difficult site to get into, particularly for the southbound traffic. If you try to get in there, you end up going around the back of Five Guys and landing up in a, in a car park. It's difficult to identify that particular entrance, particularly if you're heading towards where Whole Foods is. And, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the Board? Looks like we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the application for 272 DW Highway? Seeing none, is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to 272 DW Highway? All right, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Anybody want to start off? Any first thoughts? Mr. McConner?
I, I support the application. I, I think that, for any of us who are familiar with that area, it really is difficult to navigate, and it's certainly very difficult to see the buildings, you know, where Whole Foods is going. And overall, I think it's been shown, the size of the sign, you know, seems very proportional in terms of the size of the building and not out of character with the surrounding area. So, for those reasons, I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Ryanell?
Yeah, I also support the application. I suppose the alternative is that they could shorten the, the name of their store. But, I, no, I think it's, it's perfectly reasonable. I mean, that, again, that, yeah, that plaza is really a, a traffic nightmare. I'm going to assume that there will be a wayfinding, a panel on the wayfinding sign, existing wayfinding sign out on the street, but that's probably not our concern here. But, yeah, no, that's, I think it's reasonable.
I think I would expand on your comment and say, navigating anywhere down there in that whole part of South Nashua can be extremely daunting, confusing, and overwhelming.
Yeah, if you don't already know where you're going, you're not going to get there.
So, that's, yeah, so. I'll just jump in. I'm in support. I mean, I think this, this, actually, I almost feel like if, if we were to hold them to the, to the, what's allowed, I think it actually might look, if you will, awkwardly small, signage, because of, maybe it's just there's a bit of that sign kind of inflation that's happened down there, but I think also, it, it actually seems like it will not be at all overbearing or anything else, and I don't see that there's any, any kind of negative harm coming from what appears to be a larger-than-allowed sign. So, to me, it seems like it'll be very much kind of fitting with everything else in, in that area as well. Plus, I do think, anything that, that might help folks find their way, because I, I, I'm down there a lot, and I see a lot of people that I don't think really know quite where they're going enough of the time, so, yeah. But any, any other comments, or does anybody want to just jump in with a motion? Mr. McConner, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the application of Nashua 272 Realty Ventures LLC, the owner, Maura Sullivan, NH Signs, on behalf of Whole Foods Market, the applicant, at 272 Daniel Webster Highway, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-108, C2, to exceed the maximum allowed wall sign area, 150 square feet permitted, 303 square feet proposed, be approved. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that, given the layout of the plaza and the challenges in actually finding and navigating your way through that area, that a larger sign is necessary to direct people, you know, properly to this, to the store. We find that it is within the spirit and the intent of the ordinance. The intent of the signage ordinance is to help people navigate, to help people identify businesses and find their way around, and certainly, it, it meets that. It will not adversely affect property values of the surrounding area. We had no testimony to that effect. It's not contrary to the public interest. I also would note that we found that the size of the sign was consistent with some of the larger signs in the surrounding area as well, and that substantial justice would be done.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second, about Mr. Neely. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? And that passes unanimously. Good luck with the application, or the, the signage and the project, and there is a 30-day window of appeal. Seems unlikely, but, and also, if you have any questions, contact Mr. Vaughn. Good luck. Next up, case number five. The Favor Folio LLC is the owner. Wally's Heating and Air Conditioning LLC is the applicant, at 35-41 East Hollis Street, Sheet 30, Lot 66. The request is for use variance to permit a 3,000-square-foot contractor office without outdoor storage in a portion of an existing building. This is in the D1/MU Zone, Ward 7. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, good evening. My name is Andy Prohlman, attorney with Pruney and Prohlman here in Nashua. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have a small packet I'd like to pass out to the Board members.
I'll walk the Board through those exhibits as we talk, and then...
Mr. Chairman, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Wally's Heating and Air Conditioning, as well as the property owner, La Favor Folio. The two companies are owned by the same family, and with us tonight is Wally La Favor Senior. Should the Board have any questions about the operations of Wally's? Mr. Chairman, members, we are here for a use variance to allow Wally's offices to be located in the back of the building at 3541 East Hollis Street. We are in the D1 mixed-use district, and while we had some back and forth with the staff about whether or not this qualifies as simply an office or a contractor shop, we are here today because we were labeled as being a contractor shop, even though we're really just seeking the office use. The application, just to give you the lay of the land, the application package that we provided had a site plan, had a site plan and a floor plan. If you turn to the site plan, this was prepared by Hannah Swanson some time ago, you can see that the building is proposed to have two tenants. Rage Cage is moving from their current location on West Hollis Street to this location. They're going, they're going to be taking up most of the building, and Wally's is proposed to have the back 3,000 square, approximately 3,000 square foot of the building. And it's hard to see on this plan, but there is a fence that runs kind of parallel to the front of the building toward the back of the lot, and Wally's operation is going to be entirely behind, behind that fence and accessing from the rear. The first document that I gave you tonight is an overview that I took off of Google. The reason I provided that to you, because I wanted you to get kind of the lay of the land. You can see that, you can see the back of the building, and you can see that to our west, toward Main Street, is a large parking lot belonging to Southern Hampshire Medical Center. To our east is the parking lot associated with the building. Toward the rear is parking that would be for Wally's. There's a grassed area, and there's a significant tree buffer, and I will tell you that, that tree buffer slopes downward away from our property toward the apartment buildings of the Nashville Housing Authority. So, we're really tucked in here behind the building. We really won't be seen other than our cars coming and going to the site. The neighborhood, as you folks well know, is a healthy mix of all kinds of offices. You have the Southern Hampshire Hospital, medical offices, and hospital facilities. We have gas, convenience, and fast food nearby. You have the excellent spinach pie at Nashville House of Pizza, the post office. You have the Maynard-Paquette offices are right kitty-corner across the street on Quincy. So, it's a healthy mix of retail and industrial uses, restaurants and whatnot in this area. Just to tell you a little bit about Wally's, Wally's a local, successful business. They currently have 31 employees, plus Wally Senior and Wally Junior. They have a successful HVAC business, and they have 20 trucks or vans that we've seen around town. Four or five stay on-site every night. Most of the vans and trucks go home with the technicians every night, and those staying overnight will be, again, parked in the back behind the fence. It's really out of sight from the general public. The proposed use is for offices, and you can see on the floor plan that was part of the initial packet, there are four managers' offices being proposed, some sales offices on the side of the building, and then typical office uses, bathrooms, conference rooms. There's a small storage area. The storage area is a, is a high-turnover storage area because they order product that arrives, it goes out the next day. Most of the product that Wally's uses is delivered to the job site. If there's an HVAC unit, if there's ductwork or whatnot, it gets delivered directly to the job site, and this is a very small storage area. And again, we're really proposing just office use for Wally's HVAC. In the packet that we provided tonight, the very first thing after the picture from Google is the building permit application that was submitted back in May, and you can see that, you know, our cards are on the table. They're really just looking to convert the warehouse into floor offices, bathroom, storage, and a small kitchen. So, it's really designed for Wally's office use. And office use in and of itself is allowed in the D1 mixed-use district. It's just that we have this unusual situation where an office used for a contractor shop is not allowed. Office uses are allowed. Again, tonight's packet that I provided had additional pages from the table of uses and a couple instances. I just highlighted some instances where office uses are allowed where we're located, but we have this unusual situation where an office used for a contractor shop, even though we don't have a shop use at the site, is not allowed. And when I say we have a no-shop use, you know, we, there's not going to be any maintenance work going on at this site. There's no repair. There's no mechanical work. There's no noise that you could think of with a, a shop, let's say, the garage door open, you might hear some welding or grinding or something. There's none of that. Just some small storage and mainly offices. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, return to our variance criteria. And you have my application. We do not believe, contrary to the public interest, with the explanation I provided tight in my application, we don't believe that we are out of the character for the neighborhood, we're not harming any public rights. We believe that we are in the spirit of the ordinance, because, again, the ordinance does allow for office use, and that's all we're proposing, is office use with a little bit of small storage. Office use is allowed in the D1 mixed-use district, except we've been labeled a contractor shop. We believe substantial justice will be done. Wally's needs the space. They need the space quickly, and they are proposing to move their offices from where they're currently located to downtown Nashua. We see no adverse harm to the city or any public rights or for any, excuse me, any individuals. With this office use, we don't think we're going to be impacting any neighboring property values, and we are in this unusual situation where we do have office use allowed, which is because we're a general contractor or HVAC contractor, we're not allowed. We believe we have a reason of use, and there's no fair and substantial reason to prohibit the use. So, that's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like, well, anybody would like to speak in favor of the application for 35-41 East Hollis Street? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application at 3541 East Hollis Street? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Neely?
I'm in favor of this application. This is certainly in character with the neighborhood. The neighborhood is, dynamic is changing quite a bit. This, this operation will be out of sight, out of the public sight. They've got the nice privacy netting on the back on the fence. Actually, I think these, these two operations, Rage Cage and Wally's, will complement each other, keep the, the amount of traffic down. Yeah, I think this is a good application, so, for those reasons, I'm in favor.
Thank you. Anybody else want to comment?
I'm also in favor. Yeah, I, I think, and I think also, you know, I think it is a matter of kind of classification, and I don't, I don't dispute the city's classification, but since it's still so much office-based kind of effort with this kind of small amount of storage, I understand why it's being classified this way, but as far as like, kind of like, what the city sees as an allowed use, this is actually, seems like 90-plus percent there already. So, to me, it's not, it's not a significant reach for even as far as like, the use being something very different than what's, what's really allowed or envisioned. So, that especially, I think, gives me strong support for this application, so...
If there aren't any other comments, anybody like to offer a motion? Mr. Neely, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for La Favor Folio LLC owner, Wally's Heating and Air Conditioning LLC applicant, 35-41 East Hollis Street, Sheet 30, Lot 66, requesting use variance to permit a 3,000-square-foot contractor office without outdoor storage in a portion of an existing building. This is in the D1/MU Zone, Ward 7. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The Board did have some discussion. We believe that most of this operation, per the, per the applicant, is primarily office-based use, not a whole lot of actual HVAC use work going on here. So, really, we do think maybe this is mischaracterized a bit, but the city had no other choice. We did find that this building, where it is, is set up as a great example to be able to share a, an operation with a semi-similar-type operation where the traffic is kept low. We did have the folks talk about the fact that there is a storage area in the back. Everything is hidden from public view between trees and a, and a fence, a privacy fence. We find this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. This will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We do not have any testimony on that. This is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. McConner, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that passes unanimously. Good luck with the project. All right. That brings us to our sixth and final case of the night. The owner is Marguerite's Place Inc. The applicant is Hannah Stoller, the executive director. The address is 106 Pine Street, Sheet 84, Lot 134. Requesting the following variances from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3. Number one, for maximum density, one dwelling unit allowed, 15 units proposed. Number two, for minimum front yard setback, 10 feet required, 7 feet proposed. Number three, for minimum side yard setback, 7 feet required, 3 feet proposed. Number four, for minimum rear yard setback, 20 feet required, 3 feet proposed. Number five... for minimum rear yard setback, twenty feet required, three feet proposed. Number five, maximum floor area ratio, one point zero maximum allowed, two point nine percent proposed. And six, minimum open space, thirty-five percent required, twenty percent proposed. All requests are to remove an existing building previously used for storage and an automobile service center, and construct a new four-story building with multifamily housing, administrative office space, and a community room. This is in the RC Zone, Ward four. Welcome, and please tell us what you're trying to do, and feel free to lower the mic.
I was going to do that. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Laura Dodge. I'm an attorney with McLean Middleton. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Marguerite's Place. Hannah Stoller is the executive director. She regrets she can't be here tonight. She's homesick and may be viewing online. I'd like to introduce a couple of members of the team. This has certainly been a collaborative approach with this project, and I have tonight with me, I have Tom Zajak with Hainer Swanson, who's the principal engineer for the project, Brian Hall, who's the chairman of the board from Marguerite's Place, Anne Ketterer, and Steve Laput from Novo Studio Architects are here as well. And certainly, if you have technical questions about the plan that was submitted or some of the architectural renderings, I would defer to them. We submitted our application on June twenty-sixth. There have been some additional supplemental materials. I did bring paper copies for you. Would you...
If you, if it's not something we've already received, you can feel free to pass them out to us.
Sure.
Fine.
I have six.
Okay.
I don't need to explain to anyone. Everything that's there...
Oh, wait, yeah, speak, yeah, I need to speak in the microphone. Thank you.
Right. Everything that's in the package you have, except for the last two pages, that was recent submission from the architect. It's a floor plan. This is a four-story proposed building. The first floor would be primarily administrative offices, and then the second, third, and fourth floors will be residential units. So the floor plans are at the back and the second to last page, which is a eleven-by-seventeen printout of what's there existing at the property, that former automotive storage center, which is proposed to be taken down. It's vacant, and I believe it's been vacant since almost sixteen months now. That would be coming down, and what's shown by that is what's proposed to be the new four-story And as you read, Chairman, into the record, we are seeking variance from Table sixteen three, section one ninety sixteen of the ordinance, to construct a four-story building with transitional housing units. The primary use of the property will be for multifamily residential use, and then the accessory ancillary uses will be for the administrative offices and the community room that will be located on the first floor. The property is in the RC Zone. We are essentially asking for those six area variances, if you will, for density, the front yard setback, side yard setback, rear yard setback, floor-to-area ratio, and the open space. I submitted with the application an extensive letter. I'm not sure if you all had a chance to review it. I apologize for its length, but I wanted to walk you through the five criteria for the variance and make sure we provided enough information. I'm not going to reiterate everything that's in the letter, but we do believe we meet the five variance criteria. One, the granting the variance will be not be contrary to the public interest, and the spirit of the ordinance is observed. This does not conflict with the ordinance. It does not, you know, the proposed project does not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. There are a number of multifamily uses there, and nor does it threaten the public health, safety, welfare, or otherwise injure public rights. In fact, quite the contrary, we believe that taking a current, pre-existing, non-conforming use building, removing that, and erecting a new state-of-the-art facility that will serve Marguerite's Place and the population it serves, namely women and children who are very desperately in need of transitional housing, to give them the services and the support that they need in order to move on and hopefully get out of the cycle of homelessness and move to more permanent housing. So we believe it's going to help the public health, welfare, and safety. Substantial justice would be done to the property by granting the variance. This is essentially a balancing test, as you know, to look at the benefits to the applicant versus the harm that may be outweighed by the public, and here again, for the same reasons that I just articulated, both the applicant and the public gain from this use. Four, the proposed use will not diminish the values of the surrounding property. One of the items that was submitted with, after our application, was a letter from a local realtor opining that they didn't feel that this would have a negative impact on the property values, and in fact, it would probably help contribute to improve property values due to having a new residential structure there at the lot, where, as I said, currently the building that's there is is no longer in use. It's important to note that Marguerite's Place specifically identified this property as part of its expansion project. They were outgrowing their existing space. They serve a number of women and children. Those numbers were growing, and identifying this particular property in essentially the backyard, because they have their existing facilities on Palm Street at eighty-seven, eighty-nine Palm Street, as well as eighty-five. And having a location in this proximity directly in the backyard provides a great space for them to expand, where they've already got staff on-site, and it would be very nice to have that ability to use this new property and have staff be able to service essentially both. Little literal enforcement of the ordinance results in unnecessary hardship. Here, you know, this is very subjective, but the variance is needed essentially because the special conditions of the property are such that it is a very densely populated area. It's a small lot. In order to fit the building that's proposed, we have a very small building envelope to work with. So we're asking for the variance to, you know, essentially from those setbacks and the density to allow for the proposed project. And if you have specific questions about the plan, why the building was proposed, the way it was, its configuration, and its location on the lot, its elevation, I'm happy to answer those or defer to the professional engineer and the architect for those questions.
All right, let's see what the board wants to know. Any first questions? I guess I would, I would like to at least just explore a little bit about just some of the decisions that went into, especially, like, you know, there seem like the finer details, but like, especially like on the side yard setbacks, you know. I feel a little concerned when I see just, you know, the three-foot setback versus the seven-foot required, for example. And so I guess if we could just hear a little bit about some of the decisions that drove kind of the, some of those choices.
Sure. And Tom, I'm going to introduce Tom Zajak to come up and address those.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hainer Swanson, Three Congress Street in Nashua, here representing the applicant, Marguerite's Place. We are the civil engineers and land surveyors for the project. The concept plan that you see was based on the actual survey we did, so we've got exact measurements for, you know, the various setbacks we're talking about. Just add a little bit of technical context to kind of set the table, and then Anne Ketterer, the architect, will get up to talk a little bit about the programming and the need in terms of spacing. You can see the request in terms of the footprint. There's a story behind kind of what we're proposing here tonight. So as Attorney Dodge mentioned, we got about a tenth of an acre lot, you know, downtown RC Zone. We're about ninety feet wide, sixty-eight feet deep, RC Zone. The existing building, partial two-story, Pine Street Motors, was built in nineteen twenties. The building, as you can imagine, is essentially, you know, defunct past its use at this point. When we look at unique aspects of the property of the land, you don't have to look very far on this one in terms of the existing non-conforming use within that, the auto sales and storage within the RC Zone. The structure itself, as you can see from our survey, is within two feet of the side yard setback, at minimum, two to three feet, as you look at it. It's not quite square to the property, as well as one foot to the rear yard setback, where that twenty feet is required. In fact, Marguerite's Place has an existing playground area on their Palm Street property that butts right up against the building on that side. So there's really essentially a zero, a zero setback there in all practicality. The parking, there's eight head-in parking spaces within the front yard setback. As you know, that's not allowed essentially. The entire width of the property is one big curb cut right now. Head-in parking is not very popular with the engineering and planning team in terms of safety getting in and out of the site. And then open space, thirty-five percent required in the RC Zone. The existing site is only seven percent open space. It's really all building and parking now. So for all those reasons, we've got a unique, unique site. In terms of the proposed project, we are going up four stories in the RC Zone. It allows ten stories, a hundred feet. The footprint is about forty-two hundred square feet. For comparison, the existing building is about forty-one hundred square feet. So it's not quite dissimilar to the existing building footprint. And we are trying to slightly improve on the side and rear yard setbacks, even though we're not quite reaching the seven-foot side yard, or certainly not the twenty-foot rear yard setback. As I mentioned, as Attorney Dodge mentioned, there's a campus environment that you're trying to build with the two Palm Street lots that back up to the site. So certainly that would support in terms of that that rear yard setback. Our footprint itself is rather unique. We need to accommodate a new transformer pad in the front of the building along Pine Street, and then we've also got a trash receptacle area. So the existing, or the proposed footprint of the building will be rather unique, and then from there, it will be a more typical standard rectangle on the second, third, and fourth stories. New curbing sidewalk landscaping will improve the front door. As I mentioned right now, it's kind of an eyesore in terms of that sea of pavement. I know those are kind of planning board items, but it speaks to the improvements and maybe improving aesthetics and property values and streetscape. It's also worth noting that Marguerite's Place has an off-site parking arrangement with the former property owner that owned this site about a hundred feet away down LaMoin Street. They're going to be leasing fifteen parking spaces for staff and residents. Again, that's typically a planning board item, but I wanted to make sure that was in the record. I know it was in the application. So at this point, I'll turn things over to Anne to speak a little bit about the building itself and maybe some of the programming needs that resulted in the unique building footprint.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bring this down. Good evening. My name is Anne Ketterer. I'm an architect and the owner of Novo Studio, and I'm here with my partner, Steve Laput. I want to talk a little bit about the floor plans that are part of your packet tonight. I don't believe that they were part of the original application. We just, we just had a big deadline, so these are fresh. Believe it or not, architects don't go about breaking the rules right away. It's not our intention to ever not adhere to the laws and the guidelines of the zoning ordinance. But our job is to understand our client and to build a building that is a reaction to their needs and in keeping with their mission. So I thought it would be prudent to talk a little bit about how we got to the plans that we have in front of you. Starting with the residential levels, so that's levels two, three, and four, you will see a total of five units. There are four two-bedroom units, and there is one three-bedroom unit. What I've learned from my time speaking with my client is that there's a list of over two hundred homeless families looking for housing, which is staggering. So yes, we are asking for more density. On top of that, what I learned, and this is something I did not know, is that primarily the families that Marguerite's Place serves and helps are younger women with one child, a small, typically a small child. How it was described to me, and what I witnessed in touring their facilities, is when domestic violence enters a relationship, it tends to happen after the stress is involved with your first child. Because I asked them, I said, why are we only doing one? Why do you only want one three-bedroom unit per floor? Why so many smaller units? And so this was how it was explained to me, that simply put, there is not a need for larger family unit environments. And so when you look at these floor plans, you'll notice that the units are pretty small. So there's two reasons for that. One, I just explained. The other one is, part of the funding for this project is going to come through their ability to write and receive grants, primarily from New Hampshire Housing. I don't know if you're familiar with New Hampshire Housing, but New Hampshire Housing has dimensional guidelines. Very wise, when they set up this program, they did not do a ton of prescriptive guidelines. They basically said, we don't want all housing, affordable housing projects to look the same, the way it can across the United States, you can kind of tell. We don't want people to know. So we want architects to be creative. But we also want to create a good environment for those tenants. And so the most important dimensional requirement for housing through the New Hampshire Housing Authority are the bedroom dimensions. So in the plans that you see in your packet on the second floor, the residential levels, those are the bare minimum. So if we were to take our side yard setbacks and push it in, because right now, we're requesting relief, I think, the requirement is seven feet, and we're asking for three feet. If we were to go beyond that, we would not meet those minimums, and our total of five units would shrink to four. And that's an important distinction to be made. In terms of the front yard and the rear yard, at the rear yard, we are requesting three feet. What's required is twenty. I think Tom did, did a good job of explaining that there is a campus atmosphere. I think the current building is less than three feet, so in a way, we are making a modest improvement, but it is, it is there. Just behind that, in that rear yard, is a playground space for little kids, because they have a preschool. Which brings me to the first floor. So if we now want to turn our attention to how we got to these setback requests on the first floor, we're looking at the admin space and also a community center. Marguerite's Place to this, up until recently, did not have as part of their programming a community center. This is new for them. It's very exciting. Nashua is a growing and diverse community, and so often, when there is this kind of change, communities genuinely benefit from a place where they can go, whether it's to seek, you know, help during tax season from accountants who are, you know, donating their services, or it's to have a community get-together. Sometimes you can teach English as a second language. I wish Hannah were here, because she would talk in greater detail about some of the programming, and many of that, much of that information is to come. But part of this community center that they're establishing at one oh six Pine Street is a large flexible room. We're going to have an operable partition so that the large room can be converted into two smaller spaces, but primarily, the objective is that it needs to fit fifty people. Well, as we know, there are building code stipulations for assembly spaces, and our space, as designed, fits fifty-one by law. So there we are. We're right at our mark. In addition to the large assembly space, there is a kitchen. The kitchen is not just to serve a purpose of serving the community room. It also will work in cooperation and concert with the existing programs. And by moving the admin staff into this new, this new building, in the new admin suite, which I'll talk about in a minute, that square footage goes back into expanding their current programs. They can convert one of the spaces that currently houses their admin into a unit. So that's another unit we get back, and then they can also consolidate their preschool programming. And in this addition, that kitchen will service some of their preschool programming. So it'll be for the new building, but also for the existing. And moving into the administrative spaces, I would like to point out that presently, Marguerite's Place does not have a conference room. When they host board meetings, they go to the conference room at St. Joe's. A conference room is desperately needed. Right now, if an employee needs to have a private conversation in a small conference, the director, Hannah, who's unfortunately home of COVID, she has to remove herself from her office, because hers is the only office with a door, so it's acoustically separated, and a very small table that fits three, maybe four people. So she physically leaves her office so that her, her employee, her staff... her, her employee, her staff member, can have that conference. What we're doing here, and if you, if you look at the floor plan that was included this evening, at the first floor, is we're adding a conference room. It's not huge. It's not as big as this platform that you're all seated at, but it should fit up to twelve people. It will also have four separate offices, one for each program director, and it will have flexible workspace. We have been as efficient as we could. The break room is actually part of the hallway. We've included one employee-designated restroom, two restrooms for the community space, obviously men and women. And then the last piece of this is they have case management. One of the new things that Marguerite's Place will be able to do to serve the community is accept walk-ins. So how the building is designed, when you walk in the front door, if you are a resident, you take a right, you go into the lobby, take the elevator up to your residence. If you want to go to the community room and the community center, you take a left, off you go. If you are a walk-in, to understand and hear more and seek help from Marguerite's Place and the many wonderful services they provide, you can walk in and be seen at the case management rooms without even having to go into the admin suite. So there's a very deliberate separation, which is good for the customer and very important for the security of the employees at Marguerite's Place. So again, here we are with this ground floor maximizing, taking it to the bare minimum for the community room, fifty-one people. So I guess it's not the bare, bare minimum. And then we are maximizing, creating the most efficient admin suite we can for their purposes. So if we were to take those side yard setbacks and adhere and comply completely for the seven feet, we would lose that. I don't know what we would do. It would get to the point where you'd have to ask yourself, well, what's more important, the community room or the admin suite? And then you're getting, you're playing this game where, you know, what's, what's, where's that worthy investment? So we think that, given, given the challenge in our community and the importance of this mission and how it's going to be served, also in the context of the other homes in this direct neighborhood, they don't adhere to the setbacks as currently written. That's part of the context, nor does the existing. So we think that we're making an improvement that fulfills their ambition and also enhances the neighborhood. And if you have any questions about the floor plan, I'm happy to address them. Thank you for listening.
Mr. Ruth?
Just so I heard right, and Mr. Sage was up, spoken in RC zone, the amount of floors allowed in that zone?
Ten.
Ten. So I have a question for you. Knowing that, was there a thought about going up an extra floor or two to accommodate the setbacks and not looking for those variances?
I think the issue with that is the, both the community room and the administrative offices need to be on the ground floor to serve the, the walk-ins as well as the community. You don't want a circumstance where your community center's on your second floor. You'd have security concerns about the residents above, and then, you know, you know, I think that it would be a deterrent for walk-ins. There might be wayfinding issues. So that's the practical answer. The other practical answer is cost. So elevators cost more, more stops that you add. So you're talking about adding a couple hundred thousand dollars somewhere in that ballpark. And then you want, you've got to be careful not to go from low-rise to mid-rise to high-rise, because then you get into sort of your, your fire code issues with the assembly of the exterior wall. I would love to build a tower in Nashua, and I'm open to it. Brian, that's, that's the chairman of the board. Brian, if you're open to it, we can talk. But this was, this was the most efficient. We really did try to stick to the, the footprint of the existing building as closely as we could. That's a great question.
I appreciate the explanation. I mean, it makes a lot of sense. Again, I think Marguerite's Place does a great job in the city of Nashua. The only comment is, and I say this with all due respect, is the cost part is not any of our concern.
That's fair.
So, but, but I do appreciate your very, very, very good explanation on why, why you're looking for the, the design part of the project. Thank you very much.
Anything else from the board? I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of the application for 106 Pine Street? Anybody with questions concerning? Oh, yeah, yeah, which was referenced, but I think we do have the, the letter from Randy Carmel regarding the, oh, I guess, copies for us. Yeah. I thought we already had this.
Yeah, I received that.
I think we just have multiple copies now. Okay. But basically, regarding that, the opinion is that there will be no diminution to property values of surrounding parcels. So thank you for that. Okay. Yes, yeah, no, I was just, yeah, I was getting ready to ask for anybody with questions concerning opposition. So please come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Bobby Jane Plummer. I live at 103 Pine Street. So I'm very close to this new building, which I have a lot of concern. There's a lot of people you're trying to put in a very small area, and you've already put a sober house next to me, which you emptied out, a whole apartment building of families to make a sober house, and then another sober house on the end. So in one little section of Pine Street, you're trying to place all these people. I think, I really think it's not, it's not a good area. For one, there's no parking. There's constant issues. I see people losing their cars all the time, because there's no parking. I realize they have fifteen current spots, but you're telling me that the people there aren't going to have company? You know, there's, there's no parking. When, when the street was changed from two-way to one-way, we lost all the parking. So it's, it's just, it blows my mind that they're trying to put that size unit in that little space. You have a six, six apartments right next to it, building. So you're looking in that short little space of two lots, you're going to have, what, twenty-one units of people? That's, that's a lot. I'm not quite sure, in, in no space in the front, there's no sidewalk there now. So when they come out the front door, what are they, walking into the street with the small area? I don't, I just don't understand the, I don't understand the, the constraints that they're putting on this building. You know, if you're, if you're trying to do, I understand the point of doing it. You're trying to help, but I think it's just way too many people, you know, in such a small, small space. And I think, I think it is a safety issue. I think it's a safety issue for our street. I mean, we're already getting overloaded as it is, and that's just, that's just way too much. So, I mean, I guess that's pretty much what I had to comment. I know they did say they had the parking, which, which is a huge concern, because like I said, you have the sober house right next to me, which they made every bedroom, everybody has a car, so that's what, twelve cars there. Now you're going to have a fifteen-bedroom unit right across the street? That's a lot of cars and four houses, you know. So something just to keep in mind, you know. I, I don't, I don't oppose Marguerite's doing this. I just think the size of the building is just not meant for where they're trying to put it, you know. If you want to make just the, the room, the, make like eight units or whatever, but I think fifteen is just way too much. So that's the only thing I had to say.
Hang on one second, make sure. Any board members have any questions? Okay, thank you. So I had alluded to this earlier. Our process is that you, as the applicant, can come back up. You don't actually have to, but you can come up to rebut and, and try to address the, the concerns that were raised. And then likewise, you'll have a chance after she speaks, each of you for up to five minutes, if you want to say anything further, responding to whatever is, is noted now. So, and if you could do name and address again for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Laura Dodge. I'm with McLean Middleton, nine hundred Elm Street, Manchester, New Hampshire. I'm a real estate and land use attorney representing Marguerite's Place. I respect the comments raised by the upper. I, I would like to take a few minutes to address those. A number of the things raised, the parking and traffic are obviously going to be addressed in the site plan application. That will be, you know, filed with the planning board. There is a sidewalk that's shown. It's proposed on the plan. Specifics about that, again, I'll defer to the engineers. We are, Marguerite's Place is currently negotiating for parking spaces on LeMoyne Street. Not all of the residents that will be utilizing this facility have cars. I understand roughly half of those have cars, and if they do, it's only one car. And I, I want to make it clear to the board, I did say this in the application, this is not a sober house. Marguerite's Place has been in this community for a long time. It's got their current facilities located just beyond that. And so the members it serves, it's very different from a sober house model. And I think, Brian Hall could attest more to this than I could, but the, the residents at the facility that currently utilize those programs are very respectful. And I think that we've designed a project, you know, to keep in mind with the existing neighborhood, the characteristics, and hopefully it is the intention to live in harmony with the neighbors and work with them. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. And you're welcome to come back up if you want to say anything else. You don't have to either. It's really up to you. And just name and address again for the record, though, please. Thank you.
Bobby Jane Plummer, 103 Pine Street. So, I lost my train of thought. I don't know. I just see, I just see there's a big mistake. And, and I know Marguerite's isn't a sober house, because I know they're on Palm Street. I've lived at that house for forty years. So I know all about Marguerite's, and Palm Street's ridiculous with parking. There's no parking on Palm Street either. And that's where the rest of Marguerite's is. So I, I just see a huge, it's going to be a huge issue. So that's mainly what I have to say.
Okay, thank you. All right. No, I'm sorry, we can't take any other testimony. That's just the way our rules work. We already kind of went through our process. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Initial thoughts? Anybody want to start off? Mr. Neely?
So I had heard at, at some point, the testimony, the, the word staggering was used for the amount of folks who have applied for Marguerite's Place. And I remember, as I was reading this application, the numbers they, they compared between two thousand, I think nineteen or eighteen, and now, it looked like it went up five hundred percent. So this is definitely needed in, in the community. So I am in favor of this application. I think this is a unique opportunity for this group to have their, their facility back-to-back with what they currently have, gives, gives them just great flexibility. We, we have heard many applications over the last couple of years, and the verbiage that many people use when they come up here is I want, I think, these folks answered every question, exactly why they wanted to do the, the lack of setbacks. I was really impressed as they got really granular with the state of New Hampshire application process and why they had to have the, the lack of seven-foot setbacks. Quite frankly, these folks are, are providing a service to the community that we need. And I think this is a unique, unique opportunity to get rid of a, a nonconforming building that's just old. You know, many times I've driven by it, never seen any business there, didn't realize it's been closed, and it makes sense now. But, but that building is out of character. So I actually think, from these renditions, this is going to be a beautiful addition. But I, I do think that you folks are going to need to reach out to the community. And really, there are folks that permanently live there, and you guys have got to reach out. You've got to, you've got to win their hearts and souls, as we heard tonight. So I am in favor, but I do believe they've got some work to do as they move through this process.
Thank you. And Mr. McCarr?
I, I agree with Mr. Neely's comments. And I would just add, I think especially when it came to the setbacks, I, I think for me, just the fact that the existing building intrudes more significantly into the setback, I, I think was, was definitely decisive for me. The density is higher than what exists in the surrounding neighborhood, although it is a high-density neighborhood. But I, I'm convinced, especially from the presentation, that the program is really very well-thought-out. The needs are very well-thought-out. And I do think that what's proposed is, is necessary to accomplish that mission. And would also just note that the direct abut or to the rear is owned by Marguerite's Place. It would be a part of that campus, which reduces the impact. I, I do agree that, you know, parking is typically an issue that the planning board looks at. But in this case, I, I think it was important to note that there is going to be off-site parking provided, because although setbacks aren't necessarily for parking, they, they're very frequently used for that purpose. But overall, again, I support the application.
Any other comments?
Again, just to follow up on my line of questioning, I do believe that there was another way to do this, but I don't think that, I think that the case I made was stronger than, than, you know, the ability to, to meet the setbacks in this location. And again, less conforming, and again, as, as stated, we're upgrading what's existing there. So, so I'm going to support the application.
I'll also weigh in. I am, I'm actually a longtime board member of Front Door Agency, which is, has many similar missions as Marguerite's Place. And so I'm very familiar with the needs that are, have been spoken about tonight, and, and even things like the number of cars that are, are utilized by these clients. So it's not, I would expect, as noted, it's probably only about half the clients will even have cars right now. The other thing I think that's important to, to consider, and it was alluded to some in some of the conversation, but a lot of times it is just a single mom and, and one child, maybe two children. And so even though we're talking about fifteen units, we're talking about basically fifteen adult residents maximum, and the rest are children. So the intensity of fifteen units is unlike what might be, would generally be associated with any other fifteen-unit building. So I would see it much more equivalent to the, you know, eight or ten, maybe six, somewhere in that range. So I'm very comfortable with all that part of things. I do also want to echo, it's pretty much just reiterate, but I did, you know, I did really appreciate all of the thought, all of the consideration that was gone into for the reasons for kind of trying to balance out the amount of encroachment into the setbacks with all the other constraints that were being, trying to be provided with this facility. And even a bit to Mr. Boucher's point, even though it is allowed to go up to ten stories, and even if we set aside any cost issues or anything else, I do start to feel, I mean, I already feel like the four stories is, to me, seeming like kind of bit of pushing the aesthetics of the immediate surrounding anyhow. So I would feel, quite frankly, a little less comfortable if I was seeing a five- or six-story, you know, kind of mini tower being proposed here, even if it was kind of shrinking some of those setbacks. So, so to me, I feel like there was a lot of, like balancing with a lot of constraints, and kudos to the proposal. And I feel like it's a, you know, very well-thought-out. You know, and I, I do think, you know, as noted, I think just that community relation, just to, you know, I mean, I think what, what goes on with a lot of the sober houses is, I think nowhere near as structured or rigid or controlled or whatever. But like, again, Marguerite's Place, in an operation like theirs, is, you know, a stellar organization that's been doing great work for a long time. So, you know, they've already got that presence in, in that local neighborhood. So, but I do think, just, you know, and having the community room and all those other things, I think there'll be some natural reach-out that's going on. But, but, you know, I think, you know, then there's this opportunity that it'll still be with the planning board process. So, you know, I know you, you've raised concerns as an abutter. Feel free to definitely follow this through to the planning board process, because it's another chance to, to weigh in and have your voice heard in that regard, some of the things that this board doesn't really consider. So, so for lots of different reasons, I feel like this is a very good application, and I'm very much in support of it. Would anybody like to make a motion regarding this application? Mr. McCarr, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the application of Marguerite's Place, Inc., owner, Hannah Stoller, executive director, the applicant, for 106 Pine Street, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 19016, Table 16 dash three. One, for maximum density, one dwelling unit allowed, fifteen units proposed. Two, for minimum front yard setback, ten feet required, seven feet proposed. Three, for minimum side yard setback, seven feet required, three feet proposed. Four, for minimum rear yard setback, twenty feet required, three feet proposed. Five, maximum floor area ratio, one point zero maximum allowed, two point nine percent proposed. Five, maximum floor area ratio, 1.0 maximum allowed, 2.9% proposed. And six, minimum open space, 35% required, 20% proposed. All requests to remove an existing building previously used for storage and an automobile service center, and construct a new four-story building with multifamily housing, administrative office space, and a community room. Be approved. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. In looking at the property, among the special conditions that we found are, of course, the small size of the lot, that the existing building is non-conforming, and the existing use is non-conforming, and the intrusions into the setbacks, at least to the side and the rear, were actually less than what exists currently. We also noted that the property directly to the rear is owned by the applicant, and that this would actually become part of a campus, if you will, and that overall, the surrounding buildings generally also do not conform to setback requirements, do not conform to density requirements, and we also noted the multifamily character of the area. We find that it is within the spirit and in the intent of the ordinance, and we also noted that the program that is proposed for the building, the additional units, the community room, the administrative space, is needed to fulfill the mission of the organization, and is clearly a need within the community, and that there really is no other practical way to accommodate those needs without relief from the zoning ordinance. We know that it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels, and we do have testimony, expert testimony, that it would not. We find that it is not contrary to the public interest, and we do find that substantial justice would be done.
Thank you. Is there a second? Lionel, thank you for the second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, and that passes unanimously. Good luck with the next steps in the project, and you know there is a 30-day window of appeal, but meanwhile, you can definitely proceed with your plans. Good luck. That closes out our regular cases, and then we just have our other business, which I know we have minutes from the July 9th meeting. Did anybody have any feedback, any corrections or items to bring up in regards to the previous minutes? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion regarding the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the July 9th minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel. Is there a second? Mr. Neely, thank you for the second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, and that's unanimous, 5-0. We have like the three-week thing, so we don't have regional impact to go over.
We're still accepting applications. We'll have about six.
Okay.
There is on the agenda here, the review of motion for...
That was a carryover from last.
We already approved.
That was last.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, I confirmed that with Mr. Falk, because I was like, I know that was in the minutes from the last time, and I think that...
It was already approved.
Yeah, yeah.
But we have not heard from them yet, so. We told them that their hearing has been granted, and I haven't heard a thing.
Any other business tonight? Otherwise, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I will.
Mr. Lionel, thank you, and we are adjourned at 8:43.